It's time I'll call this December 11th, Truth and Taxation Hearing to Order. We don't need to do that after. For regular meeting.
Mr. Chair, I've invited Kathy Erickson from ARC to come do the Truth and Taxation presentation as well here.
Thank you. Does all the board members have the packet? If anyone, I have a couple I should put there with anyone. Otherwise, we'll have it up on the screen as well. First, I'd like to thank the superintendent for inviting me. He certainly could have done this presentation tonight, but as I visited with you back in September when we talked about the proposed levy, I love coming out to our member school districts and especially getting to talk about our levy and how the proposed taxes are working. In addition to that, part of the Truth and Taxation hearing process is that we'll also briefly discuss your 2018 budget, which is the budget that you adopted back in June, which then can be updated and edited anytime between now and the end of the school year. So, we'll just look at that from a discussion standpoint, and if you have any follow-up questions, you can certainly run them through the superintendent who can get ahold of me. Looking at the handout, the first slide is the levy comparison by levy category showing your changes. When I was here back in September in which you certified your proposed levy, the levy has not changed since September. So, you are being asked tonight at your regular school board meeting to certify the final levy, which is increasing, and we do have a couple changes that have happened on your levy certification. And if you look at the bar graph, your initial general RMV voter, which is an operating referendum that your voters have approved, that's basically stayed identical compared to last year's levy. The second grouping is called the RMV other, or referendum market value other. That is going to be local optional revenue that the board has chosen to put on the levy, equity and transition revenue that you are levying for through legislation, and then your board-approved $300 operating referendum. And that, again, due to just some minor adjustments, is going up around $11,000, but that is the result of adjustments from a prior year, not necessarily changes from this year. Your general NTC other category had $7,000 in there. Now it has zero. This is a category that actually has quite a bit of levy in it, but it gets wiped out by your taconite production credit. So, that's why we don't see an amount here. And the $7,700 was what used to be the student achievement levy that was not subject to the taconite production credit, but due to legislation, it is ended on the pay 17 levy last year, so you are not levying that this year. That's why you've gone from $7,000 to zero in this category because the legislature has wiped out that share. And what that was, was what we call a tax rate levy where the legislature had every district levy a little bit, and then you reduced your general education aid. That is now discontinued, so now you won't be levying that, and you'll get your aid in the full amount. Community service also looks like it has zero levy, but again, this is wiped out by your taconite. So, you do have a community service levy. It just gets replaced by your taconite production credit. Your debt service voter expired. So, you had levy last year. You have zero this year because you had a voter-approved referendum that expired. But you can see in your OPEB bonding that went up because the financial advisors, when they knew this one was dropping off, they accelerated the bond payments in your other category to have that piece go up. In addition, your OPEB bonding looks higher because we didn't have as much taconite to spread as we did in the prior year. So, that is accumulating a higher amount there than what we would have had in a prior year because, again, we had less taconite, and we'll talk about that on the next slide. This slide shows the taconite production impacts. So, because taconite companies don't pay property tax like homeowners do, districts get what we call a production share, and that reduces your total levy before it gets spread on all eligible property owners. So, this year, on the pay 18, which is the last grouping in the top bar graph, you can see in the middle line, the amount of taconite production that's reducing your levy is the $473,000. And if you look at the prior years, you can see that a year ago, we were getting $555,000; then it was $576,000; and then on the payable 15 levy, which would have been for the summer of 2000, it would have been here the fall of 2014, you were getting over $650,000. So, part of the reason we're seeing an increase in your overall levy certification is because we're getting less taconite production. So, and this is the largest factor of the change in your levy. You can see, again, in the bottom left-hand corner of the bar graph, it shows how much of your levy is replaced by taconite. Four years ago, it was about 50/50. Taconite was replacing about half of what you needed to levy for, and now this year we're down to just 36 percent of your levy is being replaced by taconite. So, again, the district didn't necessarily add new leviable items. What ended up happening, though, was a big change was a change in the taconite production. Any questions on the taconite? For our member districts, ARC, we have 31 member districts that we help. We provide some slides that just do some general comparisons so you can see what districts of a similar ADM size or a similar student size are levying throughout the state. What we do is we get a total of regular school districts, type 1 school districts, from the Department of Education. We sort it by pupil size. We look at the two districts just below and just above our member districts, and then look up what they're doing for their proposed levies. And we're just showing here that Evolith Gilbert, even with a levy increase this year, is lower than very similar pupil-sized school districts in the state of Minnesota for the payable 18 levy. The next chart is showing a different sort. We are looking at the school districts in similar in property wealth size in referendum market value. And so, what we did was, in where you see the RMV column on the chart, that is the referendum market value share of properties in the district that can be taxed on your operating referendum, your local optional, your equity and transition. So, again, we sorted by the state, found the districts on each side of you that are very similar in referendum market value size and what those districts are levying for. So, again, you can see that Evolith Gilbert, the orange bar is total levy. The purple bar are the RMV-based levies. So, you can see that these districts have very similar referendum market value levies, but if you see the net tax capacity levies, which is often where you're going to find debt service, and that net tax capacity other are much, much higher than Evolith Gilbert. I also did put the same district's net tax capacity on there, and again, without getting too complex about property wealth, this takes your total market value of the different types of property, which matters of types of classification, and then takes anywhere between .4 or 1.5 percent and up to 2 percent on commercial properties. But what we wanted to show was, even though you're very similar in referendum market value, your net tax capacity is the smallest of all the districts that are similar in referendum market value. And what that means is those neighboring or those similar RMV-style districts have more excluded property than you. They either have agriculture property or seasonal rack property. So, in Evolith Gilbert, we don't have a lot of either of those, so your referendum market value reflects very similarly to your net tax capacity. Any questions on that? And again, just for your reference, on your proposed property tax statement, I don't know if anyone is here for actual truth and taxation and maybe brought their proposed property tax statement. What you see on your proposed property tax statement is either voter-approved or other on your statement and the change. The voter-approved can either be referendum market value or net tax capacity. If you have regular debt service, that will be under net tax capacity. Everybody pays on a bond. But a referendum, an operating referendum, either voter-approved or board-approved, those seasonal rack and egg properties are excluded from paying on those. And then other is anything that either the district is choosing or board-approved or required by the legislature to levy for. So, inside of the voter or other could be both referendum or net tax capacity taxes. And again, the legislature determines which ones are net tax capacity and which ones are referendum. So, in summary, for the levy that you're approving tonight, which does have an increase, the two main reasons that your levy is changing is because of the loss of taconite production compared to last year's levy, which was over $80,000. So, of your 130-some thousand that your levy is increasing, over $80,000 is due to your reduction in taconite production credits. And then the second reason is the prior-year adjustments on last year's levy were much greater than on this year's levy, so it made last year's levy look smaller, and then comparing it to this year, it went up. And then on the next slide, and this is what I think I showed you back in September, on your payable 17 levy, you had over $90,000 of prior-year adjustments. So, these are cleanups from several other fiscal years that we have better information, better estimates, or final data. So, you had over $90,000 of negative adjustments, so this year you only have $46,000 of negative adjustments, so that's causing your levy to go up about $54,000. Any questions on the levy? So, tonight, I believe at your regular school board meeting, you'll be approving your final certified levy. If you have any questions, I'll hang out right after Truth and Taxation and before, so if anyone has any questions, but there would be no reason for you not to certify your final levy as same as proposed. And then the other piece of the Truth and Taxation is just going over your budget. I am not, was not a part of your budget creation. Your former business manager did that. I do have access to your budget, so if anyone has any specific questions about anything regarding the budget, if you would go through the superintendent, we could certainly follow up with any questions. But you can see that you are having a proposed deficit. I did want to note on Fund 45, the Irrevocable Trust Fund, that looks like it's a deficit spender, but you actually bonded for a whole bunch of money several years ago, and you're just spending down a fund balance. So, that isn't necessarily a deficit that's putting your general fund in any disrepair. That is part of a fund balance that you borrowed, and your taxpayers are paying that back through the Fund 47. And oftentimes, we'll see a minor deficit in a debt service fund, either in Fund 7 or 47, because of debt excess penalties. Very common. You collect extra money in both of those funds, and when you do, the state says, "I'm sorry, we're going to lower your levy temporarily. Please use part of your fund balance to pay your debt," and then those go away. They happen oftentimes every other year. Sometimes, we'll see minor ones each year. So, seeing that minor deficit in your Fund 47, very common. You can see that the largest deficit is in the transportation fund. I think your district has deficit spent in transportation historically. And just so that people know, there is no transportation fund recognized by the state. It's all part of your general fund, but many of our districts, I think almost all of our districts in Region 2, recognize a local transportation fund so you can show how much you are spending and how much you are receiving. So, there is no dedicated transportation revenue. You're just pulling money out of the general fund to pay for part of that. And then, as far as capital expenditures, that you are showing a little bit of a set aside this year in your Fund 5, which would be your LTFM, operating capital, and final health and safety. And that, again, if you're revising and working, that may be adjusted before the end of the year. Any questions on the revenue and expense budget in whole? I do have just a couple other slides. We do show your expense by program area, and we like to show this same expenditures that you saw on the last slide, but we break them out into the categories that we have in our finance system. And as you can see, the largest expense that we have in all of our funds is going to be your elementary and secondary instruction because that's the main purpose of schools is teaching. So, the highest expenditures are going to be your salaries and wages and costs associated with your regular instruction, and that's the green bar. But what we like to point out as well, as you can see in your case, your sites and buildings are in second place. Because you have some aging facilities, you have multiple buildings, the costs associated with maintaining your sites and buildings is high. And in some of our other districts where we have maybe newer buildings or people that have recently passed referendums and built buildings, we see sites and buildings maybe fourth or fifth place in terms of costs, but in your case, it has grown into the second highest of all of your funds. And then the other note that we like to make is you can see the growth of special education. Special education costs in many districts is growing, and we are required to spend. It's not easy to spend less in special education. So, again, just making you aware that outside of your regular and general education, you have to stack on top that yellow bar, which is special education, which is separate from your regular elementary and secondary instruction. And the top gold bar is your debt service. So, again, that would be your fixed and other costs, including both of your regular debt service and your OPEB debt service. Any questions on the expense side? The final, no, I guess second to the final. It's not often that I add pupil count information, but as I was researching your district information to present tonight and looking at some of the adjustments that we had happen, I thought maybe it was important to just review the pupil count information as far as the district and how that impacts both our levy and your budget. So, the red line are resident students who either are attending your district or another district. So, they live in your district lines, and they're attending a public school. So, they may be attending your public school, they may be attending another public school. But those are districts, those are students identified as living in Evolith Gilbert School District. The blue bar are the kids who are actually living in your district lines and attending your school district. So, the gap between those are the students who are attending another district, not yours. So, you can see down in the data center or data at the bottom, we have just over 1,100 residents, but only about 750 of those residents are attending your resident district. Now, the gold bar, which is the bar that your business manager or finance person would care about, those are your adjusted ADM, and those are the students that generate the general education aid for your district. So, the difference there is you grow up because you actually have a little over 170 students who open and roll in. So, not everybody's leaving. You get students who are coming from other districts coming here, but the amount of students leaving is outpacing the students that are coming into the district. And so, as we're looking at that downward trend, as we know, the majority of our revenues are based on pupil counts. So, as we're budgeting, if pupil enrollment is declining, so are our budget, our revenue budgets. And on the levy side of things, the leviable shares are also equalized based on pupil counts. So, as you lose pupil counts, the equalization rate or the amount of state aid that we can get gets smaller because if the wealth per pupil grows, that's the more levy we have to levy for. So, if you have growing pupils, then sometimes our equalization rates can get better. Does that help? And then finally, we use this chart to show your payable or your 2018 budget, which has a little over $13 million in it, just over 5 percent is attributed to the levy. So, even though we see that levy certification and we know that we're levying a little over, just short of $900,000, and again, this is last year's levy because we use the prior year's levy for this year's budget. That's how our budgeting system works. And last year, your levy was just under $700,000. So, of your total budget that we use, your levy is only accounting for 5 percent. And sometimes, we have a misconception that what we're taxing for pays for all the operations of the school district, and you can see in your case, it's 5 percent. Because you get taconite funding, that kind of skews your pie a little bit. I think the most I've seen for the districts that I work with is maybe about 20 percent. So, again, the majority of our revenues from a budgeting standpoint actually come from the state in terms of state aid. And with that, if anyone has any questions, I would be happy to answer any questions. If anyone has their property tax statement or has any questions, I would be happy to, in your break between regular and this meeting, I would be happy to answer any questions, or if you would forward those to the superintendent, he can pass those off to me, and then I can follow up with anyone if they have any specific questions.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. And with that, we'll adjourn that meeting. I'm going to call the regular meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item 3.0, roll call. Let the record reflect that Director Andrews is missing. 4.0, student rep.
So, our blood drive is going to be coming to us. The blood mobile will be here on Thursday, January 11th. Close-up, their trip to Washington, D.C., they're going to be talking about it at a parent meeting Monday, December 18th, in the first-floor computer lab in the high school. Our hockey team is having a teddy bear toss. The IRY is hosting a teddy bear toss at the Evolith Gilbert-Mississippi East vs. Virginia game, December 16th at 7:00, during first and second period at home. Midterm for quarter two was last Friday, December 8th. And for our sports, Monday, tonight, is boys basketball at Greenway. Tuesday is boys varsity swim meets versus Mississippi East at the Evolith Pool. Tuesday, we also have girls hockey. The girls will be playing Proctor, Hermantown, and Marshall at Hermantown. Boys hockey will be playing Ely at White Lakes at 7:00. Basketball for girls will be playing Northeast Ridge at 7:00 at home. On Thursday, we have girls versus Chisholm at Evolith at 7:00. Boys basketball versus International Falls at 7:00 at International Falls. And boys hockey versus Proctor at White Lakes at 7:00. And on Saturday, we have a hockey game versus Virginia at home at 7:00. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to 5.0, agenda additions, deletions.
I have a couple in front of you. 11.2 would be the acceptance of resignation of early childhood aid, and 11.3 would be approving a six-month leave of absence for Dino students.
Okay. Moving on to the 6.0 visitor input. Step up to the podium, state your name.
My name is Tom Hoffdahl. I remember watching the October 26th board meeting. At that time, the board directed the superintendent to look into some of the, gather information about the potential issues with removing the sod in the track and/or using track in Virginia. He said he would have that done by the end of November. I attended both board meetings in November, didn't hear anything about it. So, I guess what I'm asking the board again is to get off your horses in a way, and let's get going on this thing, and let's make a decision. We don't have to keep waiting until the snow melts. We can make a decision now and take care of it when it can be taken care of, but we've got to get going on this thing. Let's do something. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Did you have anybody else signed up? No? Okay. Moving on to 7.0, approve the agenda. Call for motion to approve as presented.
I'll move.
Motion by Peterson. All support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.0 is approve the treasures report for the month of November and first check writing of December.
Okay. For the month of November, we had receipts, general fund, $796,435.64. Food service, $40,491.81. Community education, $9,726.50. Debt service, $2,013.19. OPEB bond payments, $7,064.69, a total of $855,731.83. Disbursements, charitable fund, $236,279.35. Food service, $39,871.74. Transportation, $14,147.26. Community education, $152.31. Capital outlay, $14,687.23. Channel toll, $1,400. OPEB bonds, $2,425.50, a total of $308,963.39. Payroll disbursements, $591,264.50. Transportation, $30,747.34. Community education, $152.31. Capital outlay, $49,339, a total of $117,322.35. And I move to make a motion to accept the treasures report for the month of November and the first check writing on December.
I'll second.
Motion by Generalini, second by Saylor. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 9.0, consent agenda. Item 9.0, A is approve minutes of the regular meeting of Monday, November 27th, 2017. B is accept $200 donation from the Seroptimist Club of Virginia, and C is accept a $4,500 grant from the Northland Foundation. Call for motion to accept that?
I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda with thank yous to both organizations for the donation and the grant.
I'll second.
Motion by Saylor, second by Lauderger. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. 10.0, moving on from that, it's going to be 11.0 personnel. 11.1 is approve the notice of retirement of Terry Rosenquist, paraprofessional.
I will make a motion to accept the retirement with a thank you for the year's vicious work that has happened.
Support.
Motion by Saylor, support for Generalini. Any discussion?
This one we're going to have to replace as well.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. 11, okay, moving on to item 11.2 is accept resignation of Kathleen Kangas, early childhood aide.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Peterson. All support it. Any discussion?
This one we should not have to approve, correct? Could you tell me we don't have to replace this? All right. I changed my mind on that.
Yes, that will require replacement. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11.3 is approve six-month leave of absence for Paul Brainerd, Dino students.
Motion carries. Item 8.0 is approve the treasures report for the month of November and first check writing of December.
Okay. For the month of November, we had receipts, general fund, $796,435, $796,435.64. Food service, $40,491.81. Community education, $9,726.50. Debt service, $2,013.19. OPEB bond payments, $7,064.69, which total of $855,731.83. Disbursements, hero fund, $236,279.35. Food service, $39,871.74. Transportation, $14,147.26. Community education, $152.31. Capital outlay, $14,687.23. Channel 12, $1,400. OPEB bonds, $2,425.50, which total of $308,963.39. Payroll disbursements, $591,264.50. Transportation, $33,984.20. Community education, $31,502.86. Flex benefit plan, $2,398.68, which total of $654,352.88. Check balances, Miders Bank, $4,687,329.57. First National Bank at Gilbert, $2,52,367.9, which total of $6,739,696.66. The first check writing in the month of December. Disbursements of $62,074.57. Transportation, $5,750.74. Community education, $158.4. Capital outlay, $49,339, which total of $117,322.35. And I move to make a motion to accept the treasures report for the month of November and the first check writing on December.
Motion by Generalini, second by Sather. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 9.0 consent agenda. Item 9.0 A is approve minutes of the regular meeting of Monday, November 27th, 2017. B is accept $200 donation from the Seroptimist Club of Virginia. And C is accept a $4,500 grant from the Northland Foundation. Call for motion to accept that?
I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda with thank yous to both organizations for the donation and the grant.
I'll second.
Motion by Sather, second by Lauderger. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. 10.0, moving on from that, it's going to be 11.0 personnel. 11.1 is approve the notice of retirement of Terry Rosenquist, paraprofessional.
I will make a motion to accept the retirement with a thank you for the year's issues worked at house.
Support.
Motion by Sather, support by Generalini. Any discussion?
This one we're going to have to replace as well.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 11, okay, moving on to item 11.2 is accept resignation of Kathleen Kangas, early childhood aide.
Make a motion.
Motion by Peterson. All support it. Any discussion?
This one we should not have to approve, correct? Did you tell me we don't have to replace this? All right.
Yes, that will require replacement. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11.3 is approve six-month leave of absence for Paul Brainard, Dean of Students.
I'll move.
Motion by Peterson. Your second? All seconded for discussion.
Is he leaving our district or?
Yeah, he's going to be leaving.
It's looking like he's requesting an unpaid leave of absence this time, but...
Obvious concerns.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's been, I think it's been difficult enough in having an acting principal and a dean of students. I think that the Franklin needs more support up there. And again, I think that we need to review the needs of the school district and whether or not we need additional principals or an additional principal to fill that role. Because I, I feel that we have enough going on in our school district that taking more time away from our superintendent to be acting principal is just not in the best interest of our school district. So I think as a school board, we need to figure out what we're going to do about that.
Yes. Yeah, we're going to have to have some sort of meeting on that.
Well, I mean, we have to talk as a district on what we talked about before. I mean, what, what are we going to do? Right? I mean, to Brandeis' point, I think a couple meetings ago, prioritizing and, I mean, we've got to figure out a direction and, I mean, this particular position came up since this board's been here too. And, I mean, to the point where last year, we made a decision to do this or, and nothing's changed and the previous board didn't get to making a decision and this board hasn't been in a position to make a decision yet or give direction, for lack of a better way to say it, and we have to sit, we have to do that.
Well, and honestly, I mean, part of the decisions that we're looking at making, whether, I mean, we've talked about going to one campus, we've talked about, I mean, just not knowing what our future holds. I guess I'm not okay bringing on another principal with not knowing if it's going to be a short-term placement for them and they're going to up and move their family for a year and then we're good. I mean, I think that's why this dean of students was created was as an interim position for us or to figure out what direction our district was going to be taking and then for us to make decisions and present that to our community for the discussion and input and move forward. And I don't think we've done a good job of that. And now here we are in limbo again, and I think...
All right, yeah. It was a stopgap. It wasn't a long-term position.
No, but it was that interim piece. I guess, I mean, that's my concern on bringing on a principal for that short term because it's not like we have area principals that are living in our area just waiting for that. I mean...
Well, I guess my, my thought is whatever decision is made for going forward, it's not going to happen in the next six months or a year and we, they need support up there.
Yeah, no, I agree.
So, I mean, I, I get what you're saying and I, you know, I understand that, but the fact of the matter is things move pretty slowly. And again, I, I think that we need to make sure we have somebody in place up there that can make that their full-time job of being a principal.
I mean, I, my take is on it, my take on it is we got a principal in the high school right now. Take that stipend, give that to that person and then ask, you know, if those duties, if that person's willing to take on those duties in the elementary... To be honest, Bill, I mean, I, I was on that bandwagon when we talked about this, but being around the school, knowing what the high school principal does and seeing that the Franklin is a completely separate entity in itself, I mean, that's too much for one person. That's, you know, as far, I mean, that's my personal opinion. And we can, we could talk about that with the administration on maybe a work session and stuff, but, I mean, I firmly believe that that's more one person can handle. I mean, the high school principal's off-location a lot for different conferences and meetings and that was kind of the part where I had a problem with a stipend superintendent in the Franklin. I mean, obviously, my children attend that building, but it's, is there going to be somebody in that room any time a child needs when a superintendent has off-location them? Is that the, the stopgap there was being students that can be on-site 100% of the time and address the student needs, whereas the principal was there to deal with personnel matters for adults, right? I mean, they need an urgency there, so... But, but let that person have the first right of refusal on that position. You know what I'm saying? I mean, if it's offered and that person's willing to take it, then... You're saying the high school principal role? Yes. But, I mean, I guess from a board, though, it's, if, if we don't want to spread out a superintendent that thin, I mean, it'd be, we'd be possibly spreading out another administrator from their duties there too.
Could we, could we have a work session? I mean, I, I think we would probably, that's important.
When is this, it said for the remainder of the 2017, 2018, so is it like two weeks, a month he's leaving? When is he going?
If I had to guess, I'd say around Christmas, when he goes to Christmas, Craig.
So, we're going to have to do something else pretty soon.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, we need that support. I mean, keep in mind the dean of students position, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Carey, I mean, this is an appointed position that, I mean, how would this work if we did grant this leave of absence? Would that be for the dean of students position or just a teacher position?
It'd be for his teacher position.
Because he's a teacher appointed to that role. That makes sense. Right.
Okay.
If that, if that kind of clears up some of the, you know, concern, I guess you'd say immediate concern, that we could appoint another person in the position in the interim.
I was going to call a study session next Monday to meet about the office contracts anyways.
Add that to that.
Thank you. Thank you for the discussion, you guys. I mean, yeah, I, I agree. We have to do something.
Because this more so is a teacher's contract, leave of absence. This isn't really necessarily dean of student, leave of absence, if that...
But we're concerned for the position up there.
The position, right, absolutely.
Because, yes, we do have, we can't leave it unattended, for sure.
You know, but this request theoretically is, is a teacher request and, I mean, we have to address the dean of student thing, so, I mean... So, so then Superintendent Carey's going to go back to that position as he was in the beginning as the acting? Well, he is. Right, as the acting, okay. He always is. I mean, the dean of students is not a principal.
Just handled.
Right. He just handled four.
Children's matters, yeah.
Right. So, that being said, to close that conversation...
We still have to vote on it.
Yep.
Any discussion? I've already, I think...
I moved.
You moved as supported, so...
I'll second.
I'll call for all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. 12.0 new business. Item 12.1 will be approved for resolution number 651 to fully fund special education services.
Mr. Chair and School Board, this was a resolution I sent out by the NSB and recommended that we pass and send into our state legislators. Not something that we drew up right now.
We need a motion to accept approval of that.
I'll move.
Motion to Peterson.
Support.
Support to Sather. Hack against resolution. Is there any discussion first? Hearing none. Roll call. Director Generalini?
Yes.
Director Lauderger?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Sather?
Yes.
Director Carr?
Yes.
Director Andrews noted his absence. Director Peterson, yes. Motion carries. Moving on to 12.2, we accept the fiscal year 2017 audit report.
So, Mr. Chair, I've brought in Greg Knudsen from our auditing firm to go through the audit report. It's all yours, Greg.
Okay. Thank you. It's over. There should be a four-page handout in front of you, which is a preliminary final number. These numbers had to be presented to the state by the end of November. We are in the process of publishing the audit, which is due by the end of December, which I don't have in front of me. So those, any information other than these financials are still in the process of being put together at this point. But I don't anticipate any of these numbers that we're talking about on this page to change unless there's, something comes up, but I, these preliminary finals should be, what, what happened year ended 6/30/17 where we're at, where the school district is at at June 30th of 2017. Looking at the first page, which is your Fund One, which is your main operating fund of the, of your general fund, and you can see going way to the right column, you started the year for that fund of just over 5.5 million in fund balance. You had revenues of $10,846,000, expenditures of $10,317,000, which would be revenue over expenditures of $526,000, but $528,000, excuse me. You also had transfers out of $526,000. And as we move on to the next page, those are the transfers to your Fund Three, pupil transportation to eliminate that deficit. And also, there's a transfer to the cap, operating capital of your Fund Five. Those two amounts equal exactly the $526,000. And going across the bottom, where you're at, at your end, you have $104,491 restricted for staff development, $33,908 for gifted and talented, restricted for teachers' development and evaluation, a little over $3,000. Safe school levy restriction, $130,000. Reserve for medical assistance, $69,574. You're on the sign, your workload of that fund, $5,118,918. If you go way to the right, there's also sub-accounts on the sign that are designated, just under $31,000. You still have designated for the old CNC severance, which is being spent down, $11,121, giving you the total of $5,502,850. Moving on to the next page, which is the remaining part of your general operating fund. The first column is your pupil transportation, your Fund Three. You can see that had revenues of $666,221, expenditures of $1,110,000, so a deficit of $444,000, and that's the amount that was transferred in from general to eliminate that deficit. The remaining part of this page is the Fund Five, your capital expenditure fund, which is also a sub-fund of general fund. You can see you started the year at $25,000 of operating capital, overspent by $107,000. That balance plus the amount that you had, expenditures over revenues was transferred in from the general fund '82 to '13. You also had the long-term facilities maintenance. It's a new fund balance this year portion, $212,000 revenues, $109,000 resulting, $103,000 ending fund balance. Your health and safety, which is just going to be adjusted and it's now part of the LTFM going forward. Started at $43,760 deficit, you had a negative adjustment of $19,000 and ended with $45,000 within a year. That should be eliminated to be zero because all it's, the levy is just adjusting to eliminate that deficit. You also have a restricted tachonite maintenance repair portion of that Fund Five, started the year at $447,000, revenues of, over expenditures of $145,000, ending with a fund balance of $593,055. And looking at Fund Five total, started the year at $429,000, ending fund balance $650. Way to the right is your total general fund, where it started the year at $5,930,000. You had revenues of $12,237,000, expenditures of $12,14,000. So you had an increase in your overall general funds of $223,018, with an ending number of $6,153 fund balance. And below, below is the breakdown of what makes up that $6,153,354.
Hey, Greg, may I, do you know what the audited number for tachonite was last year, the revenue?
Um, I don't have it right in front of me. I mean, it comes in various, there's tachonite referendum, there's extra money, and there's also...
I've basically been looking for the royalty number.
Oh, the royalty number?
Yeah. But we can get it...
I think that was somewhere just a little over $500,000 last year, if I'm not mistaken.
$505.
$505, yeah.
And that's just included into our, our general revenues, right?
Right, right. Okay. Turning to the third page, this is some of the special revenue funds and your other funds. Your food service fund, started the year at $79,000, had revenues over expenditures of just under $19,000, ended the year at $97,353. Your community service funds, as you can see, totally started at $70,784. You had revenues over expenditures of $21,984 and ended at $99,768. Going across the bottom of that, you have a deficit restricted for community services of $1994. Restricted for community ed, $85,000. Restricted for ECFE, $51,228. And you have a deficit restricted for school readiness, $34,907. I know in the past, some of those deficits were eliminated by transfers. Those weren't done this year. I know in the past, sometimes there'll be an ECFE transfer to eliminate the school readiness, or there might even be a transfer from the general fund, but those deficits were carried over to July 1st, 2007. It might have had something even to do with your change in business manager and just the way it was done this year, but that's where it stands. It's June 30th, 2017. And scholarship fund, started the year with $104,000. You've got interest revenue of $212,000, scollored out $4,250, ending fund balance of $100,065. The next two are your debt service fund, your regular debt service fund, started $27,000. You have a, spent more than, expenditures over revenues of $10,897, ending the year at $16,209. This is normal fluctuation, the way it goes. And then your debt service for the OPEB, started with $36,000, $3,140, revenues over expenditures, that increased by $39,269. And way to the right is your, just a combination of both the debt service funds, where it went down by $7,757 of the two funds, ending fund balance of $55,478. And the last page has to do with your irrevocable OPEB trust fund. Started the year with $981,000, revenues and excess expenditures of $4,424, ending fund balance of $986,105. So... Any questions?
This is like not the official report, right?
It's what, no, this isn't a report. These are preliminary financial numbers. Official report will come as a bound copy and we're going to hopefully get that to you before Christmas.
But these are based on the numbers that you submitted to the state already?
Right, right. Unless somebody really finds a error and everything is in agreement to what's reported to the state and what's theirs. So I don't anticipate any changes to these numbers and these have been audited, but your audit report will reflect of these numbers.
Typically, we get that like the first meeting in January or something, don't we?
Correct.
We need a motion to approve the 2017. If you don't have any further questions?
Yeah, I just, I thought there'd be a little bit more of a...
Well, we get a, we do get a book, a certified book when it's finalized.
That contains the whole report, then?
Yeah.
Well...
So if there's a discrepancy between now and then that you anticipate it won't, then what happens to this report?
Well, this, these are just, if there is a discrepancy, I would let you know that this changed by this amount or what have you, financial, but I can't see that happening.
Is there a reason why it wasn't like finished by time or religion? I mean, why the official audit wasn't like completed before Thanksgiving?
It never has been. It's always, we get it before, try to get Thanksgiving and get the numbers down, but we have, the state has it till December, so we have to wait for a turnaround document. And we're, to tell you the truth, we're still waiting for actuarial report from the OPEB that has not hap- a actuarial report from the OPEB that has not happened, or nor do we have it in our hand yet. So that is actually holding us up from presenting the final audit numbers for, um, government-wide type entries. I don't have those, and we're still waiting for that information.
So you can honestly say that this is not complete yet?
Fund-wise, it is, but government-wide, there's, with undepreciated capital assets and long-term debt and other government-wide type things, um, no, this is not the final audit report, it's the final fund numbers, though, if that makes any sense. So we're, we're still graining them out to get the bound report to you.
I don't, I don't know, if we're gonna approve something that's not finalized yet, that's kinda-
Yeah, if you approve something other than this handout, whatever, but, yeah, you shouldn't approve it until you actually have, yeah, here's the audit that would be stamped by Walker, Drew, and Hani, and that's, that's actually, you, you, whether you approve this preliminary number or not, you should approve the final audit when you do get it.
Well, in our, so our motion is accepting the fiscal year two thousand seventeen audit report as stated for this preliminary, what, what would our motion be?
Accepting the preliminary.
I'll ask you, the board has accepted the report, made it the first meeting in January, you had to, you guys can do it already? Do the-
When we get the final report, would we, I mean, you would tell us at that point if there were any changes or any-
Right, and I would go over, um, if you invited me, I would go over, um, any other significant things that are reported in there, and also, um, any other, um, changes or financial highlights, and, including findings.
Superintendent Kerry, so is this your recommendation is to approve this tonight? Is there a reason why we would need to approve it, or would we have to, or do we have to have it done by a certain time, or?
It's, um, totally up to the school board.
Yeah, I just, this is the way it was done when I got here, so this is, yeah.
Doesn't, I guess-
Doesn't mean it's right.
Don't have to take action on it, you know, that's right.
Yeah, I think maybe just, uh, way to, um, get you the financial information as soon as possible, as soon as it was available by the end of November. Um, I think that might be the reason why this handout was there. Actually, I didn't know I was coming until Friday, to be honest, but, and that's fine, cause I have come usually at this time every year, but I'm here now.
I think a nice explanation of this bound copy as we go through would help us and board members to kinda understand it better than, than just rifling through a bunch of numbers and, you know, and understand, I mean-
I know sometimes it depends on, you know, whether it's a city or a school, sometimes it actually ends up being a little more beneficial to sit down like at a work-study session and go over this type of thing, and then approve that based on a work-study session, I mean, but it's, it's totally up, up to the, um, the school, the school board.
My concern is, is why the whole, the administration recommends the board, recommends the board approve this report, when it was just brought in tonight? So this, this approval come out five days prior to this report?
I don't know the answer.
Tom, just, again, I mean, this is the way it was done when I got here, I mean, this is, this is how it was done historically for, if you wanna do something different, go ahead, it doesn't matter to you.
And Tom, as long as I've sat here, you and I have accepted this every year.
Yeah. It seems like it's been this way for just last-
You know, I could say, I mean, you've been here for eight years and you've done it this way, so I mean, to call exception to it tonight is-
But not in the past, it's always been right either.
I'm not saying that, right, I'm just saying that's the way of-
But we call the administration for something you've done for eight years is-
I would like to see the final report before I approve it. Uh, the same thing with the contract, I, uh, I don't approve a contract till I write it either.
You can certainly take no action at this point, is what I'm-
Can I suggest that we make, that I, um-
Table it. Yeah, we can table it.
We could table it, or we could just accept as a preliminary and finalize in December when we get the bound copy.
I mean, to be honest, you can take no action, and you can just wait until they present that. I mean, it's not easy.
Okay.
I mean, is there any, like, state law or anything, or saying we have to have it done by a certain time?
You don't, you don't have, I mean, they have, it has to be in the statement by November thirty, it's the number-
Right. The R numbers, the U first numbers have to be done with as a final, and the preliminary for fiscal compliance have to be put down as the, um, the dollars and cents, which is based on it, hard by November, and then December thirty-first is when the bound audit, those are the two deadlines. And, um, to be honest, if you don't get the actuarial numbers, it's a possibility you have to file an extension, right? I think the idea, just because of some of the numbers we facilitated, um, probably just to get that done before December thirty-first, a lot of things would like to get this done before Christmas, to be honest.
Well, and I also wonder if part of it is, um, tying up before new board members come on, and, I mean, just trying to tie up from the previous year, I mean, of why maybe some boards choose to approve it in December versus waiting until the full report is, um, and just an assumption. But I'm fine with waiting, I mean, and it sounds like that's kind of what the board's thing is, I would just, I guess, I, for future, if we do that, then, um, I would hate for you to waste your time to come twice to pre, to prevent, or to present a preliminary and to present the whole final, um, but you should feel happy that we all wanna hear the wonderful data.
Very much so. It's on my way home.
Oh, good, good, okay, so.
I believe that on the twelve point two, Director, uh, Chad, that we should change the wording to approve the preliminary fiscal year two thousand seventeen audit report.
You can make that in your motion, yeah, if you make a motion on it, that's fine. Do you wanna make a motion to that effect, then?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Addy, second by Lattiger to just approve this preliminary audit report, and we'll get around to the regular audit report as another time.
Perfect.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move on to twelve point three, it'll be to approve the two thousand seventeen payable two thousand eighteen levy.
This is in regard to the presentation that you heard earlier tonight. Kathy's still here, if you have any further questions.
I will make a motion to approve the two thousand seventeen payable two thousand eighteen levy.
Motion to sailor.
I will second.
Second by Lattiger. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And item twelve, item twelve point four, it'll be set the reorganizational meeting date for next year.
Uh, Mr. Chair, typically the reorganization meeting, the meeting in this district has been the same night as the regular meeting, just happened before the regular meeting. Um, looks like it would fall on January eighth this year, if you wanna start then, or we do fifteen. It's up to the board.
It should be fine. Okay. And at that point, will we be swearing in, uh- Director Mollner? Would that be before the reorganization meeting, or after?
Before.
We'll, we'll find that out.
Well, I think the swearing in should be before.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, like- I think that's how you guys got sworn in, right? It was before, then everyone hit the reorganization meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we got sworn in first. How, but, as we've discovered, how it should be is not always how it is, so it's important to clarify.
Well, it comes down to if we have that, Lattiger, we'd make it that way, too, right?
Yeah.
So then the meeting would, at five, would it start, you agree, or, or would you just have it at six?
Starts at six.
Okay.
Yeah. We can talk a little meeting times next year, yeah. All right, so that'll be January, if we don't need a motion for that or anything.
Yeah, you have to-
Oh, we do, okay. I'll make the motion to set the reorganizational meeting date to January eighth, before the regular meeting.
I'll support.
Okay, support to sailor. Any further discussion?
Just to work clear, that'll be January eighth at six o'clock.
At six o'clock, yeah. Four down. Okay, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Twelve point five will be set closed session to discuss negotiation strategies.
Mr. Chair, um, I put this on the agenda and forgot to mention it at the beginning of the meeting. Um, the agenda went out before we had, we had our last mediation session, we actually have a tentative agreement with, with that group, so it won't be necessary for us to have a closed session tonight.
No need, okay. Then thirteen, will be administrative report.
You just, you don't wanna hear it?
It'll work.
Oh, what happened?
We got a good-
No, what happened?
I'll watch it.
Maybe they're doing something different. Bad, yeah. Um, a little different tonight, um, I wanted to take the time that I usually have to go through the visit we had at the Alexandria High School last Thursday. And those of you who were there, or who have been there, feel free to chime in at any point. So, basically what we went to look at is what they're doing educationally. Um, Alexandria High School, Alexandria High School is a ninth through twelve, um, they are different in that they have what's called the academies. Essentially what that is, um, when they're in ninth grade, uh, the kids are, I don't know if the term is tested, or they select, I guess the kids select the career path to go, and we'll get to what those, what those paths are. Um, they still offer the, the same core academics as, as a normal high school does, but, which is that part, so they, they're still getting the English, math, science, and social studies. But in, as an addition, the, uh, it's a more personalized day, they, they emphasize success in college and our workforce, so they, they go by, they go into these, uh, learning academies. But within these learning academies, you have teachers that are organized, I mean, you have a lot of team teaching, um, very small, the, the way the school is structured, they have, they have different, uh, different interdisciplinary learning experiences. For instance, we were watching, the day we were down there, they were building a tiny house, the math teacher was, was working with the, with the shop teacher, um, on some geometry and things like that.
Kids were getting credit, kids were getting geometry credit through that.
Yeah. Um, but a lot of the, a lot of the, a lot of those courses are very engaging courses, they're, they're traditional stuff that, that they're used to.
They focus a lot on applied learning.
Yeah, lots of, lots of hands-on learning. Um, so the, the four academies, first is the freshman academy, um, you can see the areas that, that they go through, the, um, essentially this is the year that they, they try doing a lot of career awareness, career awareness things, so that they can decide which direction that they wanna go into once they become sophomores. They have business community, communication and entrepreneurship pathway, you can see the different careers that are, that are available in, in that stream. Um, engineering, manufacturing, technologies, and natural resources. When I get to the picture part, I'll show you some of the, some of the cool things they've got going on there. Also, health sciences and human services, um, parent kids for government jobs, teaching, health services, law enforcement, that type of thing. So I just wanna go through some pictures of, of what we saw, this is the outside of the high school, and when you first walk in, um, in the bottom right-hand corner there, you see the, the open commons. Um, donations were a huge part of, of their success, they are, there's one wall on the, on the very end of the commons area that you can see on the left side there, uh, where they list all the people that have donated, um, just about underneath every, every room that's, uh, sponsored by somebody, you can see in the bottom right corner there.
The cool thing about this was that they, they didn't, um, tell these people that they're gonna be recognized in the community.
Yeah.
They just went ahead and, and did that, which was a, a nice sign, uh, of the school district towards the community, just to recognize them. It was a really cool, uh, looking deal, I mean, it's kinda neat.
It was beautiful.
I agree. Nice way to recognize and appreciate what communities were doing.
They have a, uh, fine arts wing, you can see, I took some pictures of the auditorium there, it's about eleven hundred seat auditorium that they have. An op, there, there's, uh, band, choir, and orchestra rooms as well. Uh, the shop room, the wood shop room actually is up, off the stage, in the back of the stage, so that if they ever needed to make props or whatnot, it was, it was in close proximity.
Can we just get in a room, you said, like, uh-
Twelve hundred.
Well, they're over, K-12, they're about thirty-four, thirty-five hundred.
What's twelve hundred for a high school?
They're about twelve hundred in the high school.
They're a very large area.
All their classrooms are very flexible, this is, uh, I didn't take these, but this is, uh, the same classroom rearranged in three different versions, you have the traditional rows, you have some soft seating up on, on the right, you can see that they can move things around, they can actually move the walls, if they need a bigger space, they can, they can move the walls, they can make smaller spaces. And, and a lot of, backing up, oh, I couldn't, I'm going forward. But anyway, there's lots of, lots of soft seating and flexible spaces, you can see that just about every room is, is all glass, and on the, on the lower right-hand corner here, you can see, this is actually what's called a large group room, they also have small group rooms, and to the classroom, the normal classroom, if the teacher wants to send a small group into another room, then they're all outfitted with, with, uh, their own equipment in those small rooms, so that kids can, can do their work. Um, but they can see those kids, because of all the glass, they can see those kids working in there, so they can control behaviors and whatnot, and they really haven't, they said they haven't had a lot of issues with that. Initially, it was, I think it was difficult for, for the teachers to let go of that, I mean, if you're used to that traditional classroom where there's thirty kids in front of you in, in nice tight rows, um, there was, there wasn't a whole lot of that, I mean, there's, there's kids out in these common areas, there's kids in these small rooms, it's just a-
And they were working.
Yeah, and they were working, I mean, it was just a different philosophy of education.
Up there in the upper right hands, the, uh, industrial kitchens that they have.
Yeah, that's actually the culinary arts program up there.
Right, right off the commons, you can see it right from there, I thought that was neat, and then also on the other end of the commons was one of the shops, the other, uh, little shop.
Yeah, we'll get to that, that is fair. But you can see, uh, these are some of the flexible spaces, there's a, on the left-hand side, there's one of the small, or the right end is the large group room, uh, the bottom right is the small group room, where you just have some, uh, meeting spaces, and you also have the smart technologies in there that kids can use. There's also in the center of the, all of the academies, you can see Mr. Strauss are sitting on some, some risers with some pads there, that kids can collaborate in as well.
And they also said that they use that space for, if there is a classroom speaker that's in, they use that space instead of, um, utilizing the auditorium, if it's just a small group.
Meaning auditorium, meaning actually a hall.
Yeah, they have a lot of guest speakers for the academy specific.
Yeah, they have, uh, each, each academy, I think she said they had like fifty-four, I believe the term is, coaches?
Fan?
Fans, yeah.
Fans. They had over two thousand, just this past year, they had over two thousand logged community hours of community members coming in and donating their time of working one-on-one in groups, small groups, of mentoring with, with the students in the classroom, over two thousand. It's grown from, it was just over a thousand in the first year, and each year it continues to grow.
Well, it's a fan, or fan-
Yeah, it's, it stands for something, I can't remember what, it's an acronym.
It's just like that.
Yeah, yeah. And they're recognized every year, and, yeah.
Actually, they were there, they were making, uh...
Students were making cardinals.
They were making little cardinals, appreciation cardinals.
A student designed it himself and was making them.
Yeah. But there's an aspect of it.
Oh.
So moving on to the technical education, you can see in the, the, on the left side there, there's, this is the back of the commons area when you walk in. That's actually the start of the shop area. Um, up above, you can see there's the, the donor wall as well, on the, on the second level. Um, in the upper right-hand corner, they, they built a greenhouse in the classroom. Um, it's in the backyard, kind of, and the bottom picture is the, the classroom portion of the greenhouse. They actually grow some vegetables and other things that they, they use in the picture.
They call it their, what, their egg building or something like that?
That's their egg building, yeah. They had a list of the classes that they offered up there.
Some of the students also did landscaping, like that.
The, I, okay.
You can, go ahead.
I was just going to say, um, their industrial program has grown significantly. They started with a half-time position, and we had one of our ambassadors, so they call them the seniors coming in. They appoint kids, uh, the seniors as ambassadors, and they're the ones who provide the tours around and everything, and so...
Part of the classroom project.
Yeah, so they're trained and everything on this. And so one of, one of ours that was with our group, he, when this first started, he was a freshman, and so it's their fourth year into this. Their first year, they had a half-time industrial arts teacher. They're three full-time right now and looking to hire their fourth full-time.
Yeah.
Hopefully going into next year. And they were also, one thing that they pointed out was being very strategic in where they placed their industrial arts program of having it very, right next to the commons, where kids were always seeing, um, while they were eating, of what they were working on and all the cool things that they were doing and the projects that they were doing. And so they've seen a lot of growth and development just with, with just certain little things that they did.
One of the things, one of the other things that I thought was pretty cool, I don't think you can tell, um, I don't think this picture is one of them, but the, um, picture on the left there, they have garage doors, like where that silver part is, they have garage doors that will come across if they push a button in the office, and that garage door will come across and, um, lock down the floor. So if there was an active shooter, or if there was a fire, they can, they can lock that up. That was pretty cool, you know, looking at it from a parent's standpoint, you know, and the safety, keeping kids safe. So I thought that one was neat.
As the superintendent had said when we were there, they were, there was a lot of concerns with parents and, why so much glass? I mean, they're telling us to get into the school, you know, but they wanted the kids coming up to be engaged, and of course, the safety issue was, was definitely.
A dress.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Did you feel secure when you guys were there?
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, a comment, but it's not.
No, but you come through the office, it's all locked down.
They'll show it to you.
Yeah, it's really...
And there was SRO there, all loaded in.
And then, one of the other pieces on the industrial arts too, that I just want to comment on is, a lot of, there's a couple, I was just trying to call, so the, a lot of the equipment is donated from different communities, um, community members and everything, and they did externships. So I love the concept. It's the first I ever heard of it. But, um, and it's usually the industrial arts teacher that, that did most of them, is he would go, in the summertime, he would be hired by these different companies to go into their company and work for a couple weeks to learn to use this equipment. That way, when he was going back into the school to teach, he became fluent with this equipment, because he said he came from a small-town school, and he was a basic industrial arts teacher. He said, "I did woodshop and small engines," you know, "that was my background." And so, I mean, they're, the, the equipment that they had was just impressive. And so he goes, "It was a little overwhelming," but to be able to have that opportunity to do these externships where he could get comfortable to then bring it back to the students and do that, I thought that was just a neat, um...
It was really impressive.
Partnership.
The, it seemed to be the focus of this school to be a partnership with the community. And, and I've said since the beginning, you know, "It would be nice to get more community engagement in our school district." But it was, it was really cool. And when I came back, um, I did have students asking me if I had gone to it. They were interested to hear about it. Um, one student, I was talking with, the student's parent, and they're really into the tiny house show, and I showed the picture of, hey, they're building a tiny house, and they're going to sell it when they're done, and it, it just seemed to really interest a lot of people on what, what they're doing. I think it's got a lot of great opportunities for kids, and I've often heard, as a counselor myself, I've often heard, um, that kids transitioning from high school into college. It's, it's tough. And from what I saw when we were in Alexandria, it was, um, it was like a stepping stone. You know, they, they were able to get some freedoms. A class might get done a little bit early, and they were allowed to go into different commons or sections of the school to, to do their work. And they, like I said, they were working. You know, it was impressive, and I think it was a nice stepping stone to, you know, to that transition.
Start having responsibility.
Yeah.
I mean, it was, it was kind of neat seeing all these kids in these areas, these common areas, just doing, doing work. And it was just like, it was, it wasn't a, it didn't even feel like, it seemed like everybody was on break.
Well, and didn't it feel like, what was impressive to me is the, is the small learning community. I mean, that's what it's kind of modeled off of, and it, you know that you're in this larger school, but it felt, right when you went into each of the academies, it felt very intimate, and it felt like you were in a small school. I mean, it was really, it was very neat, and that was...
Traditional institutional.
No, it wasn't this large. I mean, you, it was really neat, and I think that's, that was, that stuck out to me, because every, and, and that was one of the pieces that they talked about with relationships, is they think that they do engage kids better, that, um, the relationships that they develop are better because they, the kids stay, most of their classes, not all, they usually take some classes in other areas, but most of their classes are within their academy. So they're from tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade, they're with a lot of those similar teachers. So, I mean, they get to know them, the teachers are, know what's going on with them, and they just develop these strong relationships, a strong peer group. They have similar interests with their peer group. Again, they go to other academies and take some classes, so it's not like they're completely isolated.
And they were...
But it is this small community, I mean...
That's the other thing. If, if they went down a road and they decided, because they were talking about, um, they had a CNA course, uh, for nursing assistants, and they were doing sutures, they're showing them sutures, and a kid was passing out or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it was a great opportunity for them to realize, well, is this premier, is it not? And they were able to switch into a different academy, so they weren't stuck into one. Um, but, you know, it gets them, it gets them to, to take classes they're interested in. They were taking more elective, um, of their choosing, that they're interested in. And like I said, you know, if they decided they didn't want to go that route, at least they're finding out here, um, you know, in their later years of high school, and maybe saving themselves some money in college, you know, figuring it out.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I don't ever want kids to feel like they have to know what they're going to do that freshman year in college, because I was in my second or third year of college before I figured it out. So I don't want them thinking that, well, they have, because they take one route in an academy, doesn't necessarily mean that that's going to be their life profession. It's like, taking classes that you're interested in and figuring out if it is something that you'd maybe like to do. So I, I was pretty excited about it. There was a lot of good things, um, going on there, and, yeah.
It's a good, it's one of the things that they want to do.
Oh, my, well, and I think it's, I mean, I think our traditional way of education is, you know, we expect the child to adapt to how we teach. And then if they don't get it, then we find them a tutor who tries to teach them to adapt to how we teach. And this is, I mean, it's finally starting to figure out on finding alternative ways to teach children how they learn, and showing them ways, I mean, the tiny house and the whole geometry. I mean, that, I can think of so many people that cannot do geometry looking at a book. But you know what? They could apply that concept in building something. I can promise you, they can apply the concept in building something. And for them to realize that they can, that they're doing geometry, and, I mean, to be able to put that together, that's, I mean, it's more than just, I mean, it's the confidence and just all this stuff that they get. I mean, the kids were...
Lots of had jobs.
I mean, they were, they were pretty, yeah, it was, it was neat.
Lots of jobs in them.
And they were honest. They didn't say, you know, teachers didn't like it in the beginning because they had to give up some of their, you know, structure, you know, they have to be a little more flexible. And they were honest. They said teachers were kind of apprehensive in the beginning, and same with students. They had a hard time in the beginning too, but now that they've been into it for the four years or whatever it was, they're, they're really liking it.
Mm-hmm.
Just a couple other pictures. You can see the back, uh, in the bottom right-hand corner, the welding booths are in the back there. Um, right-hand corner, the, uh, screen printing, the, for the t-shirts and whatnot, to do out there. You see the CNA program on the left. Oh, this isn't a program, actually.
You missed food service.
Huh?
You missed the food service slide.
Oh. Yeah, the food service there was pretty incredible, too. Um, they had locker trays for the kids, just that you got...
The, the porters, right?
Yeah.
If you, if you saw the, like, you saw the menu, you walked up to...
And a bunch of vegetables.
Yeah. If you walked up to the, to the, the dining facility, you would look at the TV and it would tell you what, you know, well, you know, option one, or no, line one, line two, like, there's like four lines you could go through. Everything from not-so-healthy to very healthy.
And all the vegetables that you want.
Yeah.
Just a few things on the athletic facilities. So on the left side, you can see a, it's an interactive board. There's a couple of them on the walls there. There, there are no trophies, other than last year's trophies in, in the building. They did away with all their trophies, and that interactive board actually has, like, you can click on a sport, and it'll, it'll show you the team picture and all the team records, whatnot. Uh, just, that was pretty cool, I thought. Um, you can see the murals on, uh, in the upper right-hand corner that kind of line the whole hall-in and the basketball area. You can see the grin on it. Um, fitness center, looks pretty, pretty impressive, as you can see there, and there's some more of the upper floor murals that they have. Um, another thing that I found, um, throughout the building, is celebrating their success. You can, you can see, uh, they spotlight certain students' areas. Um, when the kids start in the bottom right-hand corner there, when the kids start in their freshman year, they, they're, they're asked to sign a, a little pledge or a contract, um, that they're committed to their, their education, and they, they put that up in the freshman hall. Pretty neat what they do for kids. Yeah, I think I'm done.
And all those, and all those buildings, or all those rooms, like the dining facilities, the, the, the welding center, the, uh, the, the fine arts, um, auditorium, and the basketball court, were all, were given naming rights by those who contributed to that facility or to that part of the school.
Yep.
So, they...
Just about every room had a name, just about every room had a name on, on somebody. But like the, like you said, the, like the auditorium in the, in the commons area and the cafeteria and whatnot, all had corporate, corporate names.
These are the conversations I'd like to get off the community and start having, and, and trying to figure out how we can do something like that for our kids here, because I think it's an excellent opportunity for them. I mean, education, you know...
It was exciting.
Yep, it was. I, I agree. It's, again, great opportunities for kids.
I don't think, I mean, when I was done with that, I don't think, I don't think there was anyone that could sit there and go through that and watch that and, and disagree that that is not what's best for children right now. That's not what's best for students right now. I mean, I, I, I don't think there, there was one person that, I mean, and we, and, and there were four different school districts there. There were some students from other school districts. I mean, I, I don't think you could...
You can.
I, yeah, I...
I mean, it takes, it takes, it takes the, what would be called, you know, the slightest white bread education, you know, and puts a whole spin on it.
Yeah. I would want that for my kids.
Absolutely.
That is what I would want for my children.
So, anyway, next steps. So we're meeting on Monday.
Next Monday.
And I told you that we're meeting tomorrow. Well, I guess we'll have to pick it on a night for a study session. Um, so we're meeting next Monday as a joint board again, which is going to be the center of the talk. Um, the transportation thing, which we're also talking about, kind of took an interesting turn this week, and some personnel things that they have going on over there, um, we're going to be having a discussion about possibly sharing some transportation and, uh, maybe personnel, um, because they have openings now.
More of a, sure, exactly, it was hard back.
It's like a... Um, yeah, it just happens, um, just, it's new to me, but it's...
(inaudible).
Okay. Um, yeah, so, and I think depending on what comes out of that meeting, then I think we, as a school, need to sit down and decide, you know, what we're doing.
They, they had a lot of strategies for it. I mean, because, yeah, they had a lot of good strategies and good ways, and, um, and they, they encouraged, they encouraged community members to come there in business, businesses, for us to invite businesses to come there. I mean, so, so that was one piece, that they really did encourage us to bring more people there and, and have them see it. And, I mean, so I think it's starting to just build and develop and show, I mean, I think that's a piece of it.
Were you able to sit with the superintendent and said they said they...
Yeah, and a school board member.
They tried eight years ago to do this in a cell flat on the face. Wasn't going to work.
It wasn't ready, yeah.
Well, it wasn't ready, and they just didn't do the public training. They didn't have any information for the public.
Yep.
They didn't have any business people involved.
Mm-hmm.
And then they went four years, I don't know, six, two years after that, they came back.
Yeah.
To the public with their complete plan, complete public input, business input, and it, it went. It went, it went to the point where the community members and the business people said, "Well, we don't want our, if you're going to make this, you're going to, you're going to, you'll have to build a new campus, a week, a week." And that's when it took the, the public Johnson.
Uh, started with a J.
Yeah, Johnson High School.
Jefferson, maybe.
Jefferson. Jefferson, and they remodeled that, and they poured some, like, some other school down, and then built this academy out of, out of an outside town.
They remodeled the elementary, and then they tore down the old high school.
Right.
And, um, well, they sold.
Their original, their original intent, what, what Bill was referring to, they, they, years ago, they were just, they wanted to build a new high school, and they thought they could just go out and get a new high school, but they didn't really have a plan for it. And failed miserably.
Couldn't justify it.
Well, at least they weren't changing there.
But then, that's when they, they started traveling down to Nashville, Nashville School District. They started traveling down there and developed a plan, and, uh, sold it, so...
They were supposed to Nashville, California.
Yeah, they were all...
Washington State.
They were everywhere. They, you know, put their own plan, and of course, you know, when it came down to it, the remodeling that, this Jefferson High School or whatever.
It wasn't going to work.
If it wasn't going to work, it was, you know...
For what they wanted to do, yeah.
Because the business people were involved, and, you know, the corporate people were involved in, "That's school." Something about school not being good enough for education, or some, or, or kids weren't...
Figurable.
If it wasn't figurable, why would you still do it? And then they were, they received a chunk of land on the outside of town, where the stip, the build stipulation, they had, they, they had to... They had to build on it, and that's the only, two years, yes, two years.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, the land is perfect for where it's located.
They had to, they had to, and then, then the land was.
The land is great for where it's at.
They put a shovel in, and it was like, then the land is there.
Right, that's all we have.
Yeah.
Do you want to make some more?
How many promotions remain in this meeting?
Second.
There you go. 7:30.